Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. Thank you for being here tonight, online and here. And we're ready for the roll call. Ms. Ketchel?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilwoman Phan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes is absent. And Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchel. Let's move on to our public recognition. We don't have any minutes to approve, so I'll move from there. We do have public recognition for anyone who would like to address this committee. You have five minutes to discuss anything that's on the agenda.
My name is Shirley Camp, and I live at one-one-eight Wayne Street. And I'm here to speak about the Laurelwood project. My question first is, why does every spot of land need to be covered by a building? I know, taxes and somebody will make money. But what about the wildlife and the clean air for us to breathe? In the area where Laurelwood is proposed, it's already a high-traffic area getting out on Southwater or one-on-nine. Even with the proposed traffic light, you might not be able to get into the line of traffic because it's packed up a lot of the times to almost our street. So even more important, what about emergency vehicles? How are they going to get there and get in and out? Because it's difficult now. And with the proposed amount of buildings that they want to put in that area, I'm understanding it's going to increase the traffics as much as seven-hundred units a day up and down those two streets. So I'm just asking you to think about, would you vote that where you live? And let's apply the golden rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camp.
My name is Leslie Smith, and my husband Rick Smith and I live at one-on-nine Hicks Lane. And some of you may recognize my name because last Thursday I sent you an email about the annexation of the seventy-seven-and-a-half acres located east of Dobbins Pike and north of Hicks Lane, otherwise known as the Myers Hill Development. And I won't belabor my time up here with all of the details of the email that I sent you, but I would like to highlight some of those. I would first like to talk about Hicks Lane and just the condition of the lane. And I did bring the pictures that I also attached to the email. May I present this to the committee? The pictures that I've just presented to you indicate the disrepair of Hicks Lane. First of all, Hicks Lane is a very narrow fifteen-foot-wide lane. And those pictures will show you crumbling asphalt as well as tire ruts for all the tires, the cars that have to leave the road just to be able to pass oncoming traffic, as well as the turnaround where the buses go when they are turning to go to Schaefer Middle School right down the road there. We have lots of potholes, and those potholes are pretty much year-round. They do occasionally patch those holes, but oftentimes that does not stay for very long because of the amount of traffic that goes up and down that lane right now as it is. Any additional traffic that would be caused from a new subdivision there would make that road absolutely impassable. It also is an extremely hazardous road just because of the width of it. And it's very hilly, and I know that there is at least one hill where you have to be almost right on top of it before you will see oncoming traffic. And the traffic appears to be in the middle of the road because it is so narrow. I've heard others on the road, others, neighbors, say that the buses, when they pass each other, they've actually hit their mirrors because they are so close. We also have a lot of students who walk that road after ball practice throughout the fall and winter months. And as you can see right now, it's dark. And so after practice, they're walking home along that lane in the dark. And it's just an extremely, extremely dangerous road. Now, we've been told that there's going to be just an emergency exit onto Hicks Lane from the subdivision. However, I think we all know that if it's a shortcut, people are going to use it. It's not something that's going to prevent people from going in and out through that route if they feel it's going to give them a shortcut out of the neighborhood. Plus, the number of additional students that would feed into the schools there. The schools are already at or near capacity. And just even if people do not use the emergency exit to get down to that school, they will use Hicks Lane. Many times, the school buses use Hicks Lane as opposed to going up to the top of the hill to Union School Road because that road gets so backed up with people going in and out from Bill's Elementary School that that traffic can back up all the way down to Hicks Lane. We also heard at the last session that they are planning on widening Dobbins Pike, but that would be down in front of the subdivision so that people can turn in and out of the subdivision. It will not impact the traffic backup that already occurs right now. So I believe, my husband believes also, that the original vote of no for the annexation of this property was the correct one. And we respectfully ask that you again vote no on this annexation.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and Galton City Council. Thank you for allowing us to have public recognition tonight. My name is Joanne Bates. I live at one-twenty Hicks Lane along with my husband on land that's been in our property, been in our family for over a hundred years. We're a farm family. We farm in the community and the county and therefore have a great affection for and strive to serve as good stewards of the land. The request to annex and ultimately rezone the property known as the Myers Hill Development is not good stewardship of this property. We're opposed to what's being discussed at the work session tonight. The request to override, to overturn, to change what your planning commission discussed, evaluated, and voted on, and voted no to recommend approval on July twenty-fifth of this year. From a previous attempt, we know that the applicant and the owner want to put a hundred and ninety-three houses on seventy-seven-and-a-half acres. That's if I do my math right, and I'm not real good in math. Two-and-a-half houses per acre, and that's going to cover the land in cement and concrete. It reminds me of a song, if you're old enough to remember Joni Mitchell, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." In a document that was posted online, and I'm kind of paraphrasing here, somebody wrote, "This will not affect landowners." Well, they didn't ask me and my husband. For you see, we're going to have eighteen to twenty backyards adjoining our property. We respectfully request that you adhere to your planning commission's decision when it comes to a vote. Our reason to deny annexation and ultimately to rezone is this is spot annexation in the middle of county property. If you want a visual, a donut hole. If it's rezoned, and that's the purpose of getting it annexed, it'd be spot zoning. The median area around this area is zoned R forty and R fifteen. If you put a donut hole of R eight in the middle of it, to me, that's spot zoning. In addition, she's spoken about the traffic on the lane. It's one lane. It's narrow. It has no marked center line. And on any given day from the first of August until May, fifteen school buses run up and down that lane in the morning and again in the afternoon. They serve Benny Bill's Elementary and Schaefer Middle. I'm told in conversation with the Sumner County Transportation Department that they sometimes make more than one trip because it takes multiple routes because we don't have enough bus drivers. Additionally, it's used as a shortcut between Dobbins Pike and the eastern end of Albert Gallatin. I watched that this afternoon. I just happened to be in the back, looked out my window. Shortcuts, people picking up kids, buses, quite interesting. The proposed plan, as Ms. Smith talked about, shows all the traffic exiting onto Dobbins Pike. Well, there's an emergency exit at the far end of Dobbins Pike. Well, that's going to be interesting. So we already have traffic that's there on Hatton Track Extension, which, by the way, thank you for, that's made our life a little bit easier. But it comes to a standstill in the morning, and it comes to a standstill in the afternoon. We do get two months of the year, June and July, that we can approach the intersection of Albert Gallatin and Northwater without tremendous congestion in the morning and then in the afternoon. But please, before you vote, come visit our area and see what we're talking about. This emergency exit is going to be exiting into Schaefer Middle School property. I don't know what the Board of Education will have to say about that, but they have an enrollment of six-hundred-and-fifty students, approximately sixty staff members that are transported daily to that area. And Benny Bill's has approximately seventy students with sixty-nine, seven-hundred students with sixty-nine-plus staff. Those numbers were at the beginning of the year when we talked in July. That's a total of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty students and a hundred-and-ninety-five-plus adults that enter and leave a central spot every day, transported in, transported out. These students don't have cars, like when I taught at the high school, and you had to, you were concerned with student drivers and traffic. Everybody's got to be transported. The proposed development is going to be for a hundred-and-ninety-three homes. You, the city, are going to have to provide water, upgrading the water line to a twelve-inch line, gas, electricity, sewer, a safe and peaceful environment, garbage pickup, roads, fire protection. According to the work session agenda, on one page, the police department has already told you, they're going to need additional police to monitor that area. I can see other departments requesting money for things. Understand why they want to spend the city's money. In the county where this property is, the requirement is you can have five acres and build one structure. But should you, that's my five minutes, should you have more than five acres, you've got to have two septic tank sites. Hey, show us some of Gallatin's true grit. Show us some amazing grace and continue with what your planning commission said to do. No approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
I'm Tina Tobin, four-sixty-two Gibbs Lane. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm also looking to speak about Hicks Lane. I don't want to repeat everything, but I know we've talked about the road. And I'd also like to just mention that Dobbins Pike cannot accommodate more traffic. I mean, we have, it's a fast road. We have so many blind hills. At Gibbs Lane, we just had a fatal accident not that long ago at Dobbins Pike, and the thought of adding more traffic on that, I just cannot imagine. A hundred-and-ninety-three houses, that's an awful lot of extra cars on Dobbins Pike. So please, I agree that the original decision was correct, and please don't add that traffic. Thank you.
Tobin?
My wife and I live at one-twenty-nine Hicks Lane, and we have lived there for twenty-eight years or so. And you know, it's a nice, peaceful community. We want to keep it that way. With all of this development and stuff and all, I mean, you're going to have more increased traffic. You're going to have also, we're going to have more crime. We're going to have more litter and other things now. And plus, one thing you're going to do also is you're going to take in the habitat that's in our area, where are they going to go? I mean, you know, with the development at the end of Albert Gallatin Road and the development on Hicks Lane and all, where is these animals going to go? I mean, you're going to put them in harm's way with all this building and construction and everything that's going on, and they would have no place to go. And you know, you're going to take a peaceful, quiet community and disrupt it with all this traffic and this development, you know, with it being built. There's going to be homes and stuff there that's going to have two to three vehicles per family. I mean, just look at the traffic, that it's going to be more congested, especially, you know, at the red light up there by the funeral home, the Shell Station and all, and you know, people going in and out of school. And you know, it's going to be a nightmare if there's an emergency out there. I mean, look at the response time during this peak traffic times. It's going to delay them getting to an emergency. I mean, you know, it's going to be more of a headache, and it's going to be more of a disruption to our way of life there. And I mean, I would like for y'all to take and vote no, like you did last time. This is just way too much for us to be have put on us. And plus, I mean, with the city infrastructure, the way that it is now and all, I really don't think that you can handle it. I mean, you know, with the not enough police and not enough fire people and, you know, and it's just going to be a major problem. I want y'all to use foresight, not hindsight. I mean, you've got to put a little bit more thinking and planning into what we're doing in this beautiful city, into our beautiful area. There is nothing that is gracious and growing about Gallatin now. I mean, if you take a look at all of the areas in our great city, all you see is congestion, traffic problems everywhere. And it's just what all these developments that's going to do is just create more havoc and for people and especially more havoc for the environment. And you know, I would think, I would appreciate if y'all would think about it and take into consideration and vote no again on this matter. Thank you.
There.
My name is Joe Johnson. I live with my girlfriend at one-seventy Dobbins and own one-sixty-eight Dobbins also. My concern is the traffic. By the way, I'm a recovering stroke. I had a stroke in October and recovering right now and have multiple doctor appointments. And getting out on Dobbins Pike at this particular time is bad. I can only imagine what it will be if they put, if you vote yes on this and overturn it, what the traffic will be. And another question, other questions I have concerning my property, one is, what will that do to the, our zoning? If they get that zone, I know she talked about the donut hole and what have you. Will that can, will we be grandfathered in as county residents, or will we be zoned into the city? And also, the infrastructure that would have to be put in, where are they going to put it in? Down Dobbins Pike? It's already so congested, you can't get in and out of your driveway. If they put the infrastructure down through there, it's going to put Dobbins Pike at one lane for part of the time. And it will be impossible for us to do anything, get in and out of your property. I please ask, on behalf of all of us that are in that area, to vote no again. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. And everything I hope will go our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Sheriff Woman, Mayor. Pascal Germans, thirteen-thirty-five Longwood Pike. I agree with the planning, they voted no for a reason. I think we need to stop expanding. We can't afford it. You probably already a packet. The plan of service say police can need more officer to cover that, and police is not even at capacity now, at full capacity. So why don't we start by catching up and get everything straight up and stop stretching our people, stretching our police, stretching our fire? The idea of putting an emergency exit to a school sounds kind of bad. And I would like to remind you that this idea got presented to you at least somewhere there, maybe not Eileen, I don't think you were there, but to get a crash gate that was on the Wingsong Development, to get this kind of emergency exit. This idea was pushed down by the council at that time to keep up, and so people are going to use that exit. It's okay to say no, guys. We need to start taking care of our people and say no. You can stop it right there or push it to the council in January. If you push it, you know already I'm going to vote. It's not going to be a surprise, I'm going to vote no on that. The other point is about the charters, bringing the charters for a change. And I think we should look at more than just that part, because I read the charter again today, and there's probably things we can change and make more current to give us more leeway on what we could do as decision-making to make, you know, our people's lives better. So again, this and I will shoot you an email with what I picked up in it, and if that could be presented in January, that would be great. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
I'm Doug Stinson. I live on Lorain Drive. This Laurelwood proposal, I just, I'd like to know how many more of these townhouses and apartments and things we're going to put up every time a piece of property comes up for sale? Now, I'm eighty-four years old. I've lived there sixty years, and it's always been a nice neighborhood. Now they're proposing to cut a street in there and put up no telling how many townhomes. And me and my wife tried to back out of the driveway, what's going to happen? They're talking about cutting the street from the end of Lorain Drive to driver's lane, I believe. I'm kind of, I don't know all the details of it, but I do know that these townhomes have just about took this town. And I appreciate if y'all would see fit not to approve that Laurelwood project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson. Is there anyone else? If not, public recognition is now closed. We'll move on to our mayor's comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman George. I do have several things. First of all, if anyone was out driving within the last hour or so and want to know what all the buses and police cars were, that was the annual caravan for Christmas with kids. They fed a whole bunch of kiddos at the civic center tonight. How many, David Brown? Six hundred at Civic Center and then transported them to Walmart to go Christmas shopping. So quite the production happening here in our community. I do want to say a big thank you to the Gallatin Chamber and all the departments of the city that helped support the Christmas parade this last Saturday and several of the departments with the city who also participated in the parade. That was a lot of fun. We didn't get rained on till the very end, so it was fabulous. But the chamber, a whole lot of volunteers and participants put a lot of time and effort into that. Also, I want to give a special shout-out to Haguenese. Every single year, that business produces a Macy's Day-worthy float. And in talking to them this year, I said, "Who's the creative?" And he's like, "Me." But apparently, they have a lot of folks who have actually retired from Haguenese that come back and work on that. So I just want to say how appreciative I am for them for going to the effort that they do each year because truly, their float is what so many people look forward to in our community. I love the fact that we do still have a hometown Christmas parade, and it's fabulous, and we have a lot of participants. Even this year, they had a lot drop out because the flu and weather fears. But the flu is certainly understandable, and we escaped the weather fears. Also, I want to mention that today, the Gallatin Police Department did something really special. There's a young man named DJ Daniel. You may have seen him on social media. He's been sworn in. He's a huge fan of police officers. His whole family is. He has two siblings, both of whom also want to be police officers. But this young man has had significant health challenges. He, his father, and his siblings were all at the Gallatin Police Department today, and our Gallatin Police Department did swear in DJ Daniels as a police officer. He gave us all quite the lecture, and the women hugs, and he loves to rub bald heads for good luck. So if you run into him, watch out. But just a really special young man. I think he was very bolstering for our police department and certainly helped give a special gift to all of us who got to be there. This Saturday is Reeds Across America, happening at the Gallatin City Cemetery at eleven a.m. This is probably my favorite, and I may say that about more than one, but right now, this is my favorite event of the year. It's where the wreaths are placed on the more than six-hundred veterans who are buried in our Gallatin City Cemetery. It's a short service. You can participate in the replaying or not, but I guarantee you, if you attend the service, you will be glad that you did. And so I hope that you will come out and watch the very short ser, participate in the very short service and help lay wreaths if you wish, but certainly to be there and see what it's all about. This will be happening all across the country at the same time at cemeteries, actually around the world, and some foreign locations as well. So it's a special thing that started many, before my time, and I'm just so grateful that it still continues. This, I think tomorrow, the Gallatin Police Department is going to be doing their veterans giveaway, two veterans at the Veterans Home on Southwater Avenue. So thank you to the Gallatin Police Department for doing that. Do want to let this council know that Jennifer LaFever has accepted the CIO position with the City of Gallatin, and she'll be starting in January. We'll look forward to that. She said she is ready to hit the ground running. And then I think that leads me to my final comment, unless I've forgotten something, that this will be Lori Smalley's last meeting as our CIO, so.
Didn't you just say we don't have a meeting next week? Yeah Lori, this is your last meeting, did you want us, did you want us to say anything? I will, I am most grateful for the great strides that she has led us through in technology. The city, like many, were kind of lay the doctors of technology. And I think we have come decades in the last, less than a decade that you've been here. So I thank you for your service and certainly the department that you've built and the people that you work with who are so invested and have helped put together a really fabulous technology system for our city. Uh oh, she's feeling forced.
I just want to say thank you for all the support and that we've, you know, you've shown me over the years. I remember when I first came in and did the IT assessment and was talking about Microsoft licensing and how much, you know, we needed to get in, in step with it. And I remember Mr. Mayberry at the time saying to me, well, I had three options. And the third option, which was, you know, the most expensive, was five hundred thousand dollars over three years. And he said, which one do you want? And I said, I want the third option. He said, okay, motion to approve. I mean, it was, and, and that really with looking back now, he, he was so conservative with money and he was so, you know, it just, it, that's how this started and you all had continued that through the years. So can't thank the department heads enough, they've supported me through the years. And although we've, you know, had to agree to disagree a lot, we kept working together. The staff that I have is, I'm leaving in good hands. So I have all, all the confidence in the world that they will continue on. And I'm looking forward to having Jennifer join in and I'll come back a little bit to help her out and transition to her. So I just appreciate everything and all the support that I've received. So it's been a great eight years and one of the best moves in my life when I moved up here to take this position.
You have taught us and guided us well and for this council's, and the, I think I told the department heads today, but we'll be having a little gathering for Lori and when we decide, I told you this weekend, whenever we decide upon a date. And I'll let you know about that, because I would love for you all to attend as well. I'll let you know about that. But gonna, gonna miss her. We will be having a reception on January third, prior to the meeting from five to six for our outgoing council members. And that would be all of my comments, I do believe, this evening. Be in these chambers? Pardon me? In these chambers from five to six? Oh, we'll have it in the lobby outside. I did mark some events, I want to make sure I mentioned, oh, Councilman Alexander's birthday on the eighteenth. The chamber's having a drop in breakfast at the gathering place on the twentieth. A reminder to council that the employee luncheon is this Friday. And I mentioned a reception, that's it. And this might be our last meeting?
For this year.
For this year, yes. Awesome. Okay, so let us move on to the agenda. Ordinance number zero two-two-one-two-dash-sixty-six. Chief Bendy.
Yes, this is the ask for thirty-six thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-three cents from a damaged vehicle insurance reimbursement.
The motion by Mr. Fennell and second by Councilman Alexander. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Oh, you can stay on for number two. Ordinance number zero two-two-one-two-dash-sixty-seven.
Yes, this is a sale of surplus property for sold vehicles on gov deals, fifty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars.
Motion sent on.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. McCord. Zero two-two-one-two-dash-sixty-nine.
Evening Council, I'm McCord, City Planner. We had several items tonight and these items were heard by the Planning Commission previously and mostly at the November meeting. And there we go. Well, trying to. Normally does. No, it's not.
You just advance it yourself, we were meeting here.
Uh, I think I can do it. Okay, this first item tonight is a request for a preliminary master development plan for Primrose Daycare Center. And this would be located on the east side of Greenlee Boulevard, a little bit north of the new Dollar General store, north of Highway three-eight-six. And, of course, that doesn't point, but as shown on the screen. The applicant is intending to build a thirteen thousand square foot building, thirteen thousand five hundred square foot building on the, just under four acre parcel. It would contain, of course, the childcare center and accessory outdoor play area. Then we'd also have parking in the front and an interconnected parking lot with the vacant parcel, currently vacant parcel to the north. This property is zone PGC, so this use is a permitted use in that district. It would not provide a connection to the vacant property to the south because there is a small creek there. And they would not be crossing that creek. Of course, parking would be in front of the building and they would meet landscaping buffer requirements. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their November meeting, voted six to zero to recommend approval of this master plan.
They approve.
The motion by Councilman, who is it? Alexander, sorry.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. What again? Ordinance number zero two-two-one-two-dash-seventy.
Okay, the next item is a request for a preliminary master development plan on a thirty-one acre parcel, or thirty-one and a half acre parcel of land located east of Big Station Camp Boulevard on the south side of Vietnam Vets Boulevard and north of the CSX Railroad. The eastern portion of the property contains a substation, I think many of you might be familiar with that. Property is being used now, last few years where they've been placing field dirt on the property, particularly on the western end of it. Previously, the property was approved for a mini warehouse storage facility. That master plan had expired. And the applicant now is proposing a new master development plan that complies, comprises of multiple uses, including eight lots. Eight lots, eight open space tracks and a new public roadway that will extend from Big Station Camp Boulevard just to the north side of the railroad track. Now, what you're looking at here is a rendering of the plan and that shows Big Station Camp Boulevard on the left side of the plan. So north is kind of off to the upper right-hand corner of the image that you're seeing. They intend to do is build a large use recreation, indoor recreation facility on the south central portion of the property with accessory parking. And then there would also be a variety of uses, including restaurants, convenience store, hotel, storage facilities, including mini storage facilities. And then the roadway would extend back to and provide access to the existing substation. They would, of course, be providing accessory parking. In a couple of small areas, they would request alternative buffer yards because of the unusual shape of the property and slopes. And most of those interior buffer yards would be between the streets and the parking areas. Is it, better little rendering of this shows you the location, a little more discernible of, of the buildings and the road and parking area. Now, the hotel would be backing up to Highway three-eight-six. Convenience store use would be on the corner of Big Station Camp Boulevard and the new street that they would construct. And you can see the larger building, which would be the recreation facility would back on the south and west portion of the property, parallel to the railroad tracks. And there would be other commercial and restaurant uses in the interior of the property. So this would be a private recreation facility that would cater to a number of sporting activities. And it's not just one activity, so it would be a draw, not just for the community, but regionally. This is a rendering of what some of the commercial buildings, including the hotel, would look like. So, you know, I think you're quite familiar with typically these types of structures in which are commonly built in the City of Gallatin now to comply with our Land Development Regulations and Architectural State. And this would be the indoor multi-use recreation facility and other commercial activities that could be built on these properties. The Planning Commission did review this and discussed it at length. Multiple uses would comprise, again, eleven buildings and three hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet. Of course, the largest being the recreation facility. Planning Commission, after reviewing comment, voted six to zero unanimously to recommend approval of this master development plan. The applicants are in the audience and they can probably provide you a lot more detail if you have questions about how they're operating and their schedule of development.
I'd just love to hear them talk about what their proposal is because I actually had calls and questions about it. And I listened when it went through the Planning Commission, but I think it'd be fun, fun and informative to hear from the representatives. I think we all enjoy it when we have something that's not apartments or townhomes.
Bill, Jim Harrison, CSDG. Bill did a great job of describing the general outline of the development and what's included. Sports facility is probably the biggest thing that people have an interest in. And we've been working, very excited about that and very excited about the flex space that they've got. They have indoor basketball courts and things of that sort. There is an option that they have and that's part of this PMDP to do an outdoor turf field. We don't know whether that's going to happen for sure, still working on that component. Very exciting use for this corner. If we did the outdoor flex field, we would actually just eliminate some self-storage on the backside towards the, the transformer station, the substation.
That sounds like a potential condition of approval.
Well, we, we don't know for sure if it can all work economically, bibbly together. We know what's in the indoor facility can, so that's why we're proposing what we have on there right now. But we want to work to make that happen. We appreciate city staff working with us. And we've been, of course, coordinating with Mr. Fenton, Mr. Fenton and Rosemary Bates as well. They're very cooperative, very helpful to try to promote this. Because we know this will attract a whole lot of folks and be a great facility for our city. So just some general information, obviously the hotel works hand in hand with sports facility, with activities you have such as that and athletics and things that go on with that. The convenience store as well. And then we feel like the restaurants and some of the other uses around there, with a very nice mixed use development, will really work together to be very walkable, to overlap with parking needs and things like that. So just here to answer any questions as you may have.
What kind of timeline are you talking?
We're planning on going immediately to FMDP. So we're really hoping to kick off construction within the next six months. So we would hope, you know, to have buildings and everything up. I would say it'd be a year, year and a half, something like that. That's what we're hoping for, we're working for that as quick as we can.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is for the indoor sports facility, you mentioned basketball. What are some other examples?
Well, there's, there's other types of training that go on. There's actually an opportunity with the turf fields to have indoor soccer and things like that. There's a, there's a cut, there's a facility I did a long time ago, I won't say how many years ago because it would kind of age me, but that's down in Franklin called The Forum. It's Alpha Gothic Court on Mallory Station Road. And that's been a great facility. I've seen everything from, I don't think this is big enough to have hockey in it, so it won't quite go that far. But it does a lot of different types of flex activities where you can work on training, pitching, baseball, basketball, things of that sort. It's just a real mix of activities and it's very flexible, the size of the facility. And so that's what's exciting about it.
Exciting. My other question is about the restaurants, are they mostly fast food, drive-in or are they sit-down?
No, we expect that they'll be mostly sit-down. Most sit-down restaurants have, after COVID, have kind of an element of drive-through, pickup type service anyway.
Fast casual?
Yes, yes. So there'll be some of that. So we think there'll be, I know I was at the Chop House meeting my family the other day and, and they had, you know, so many parking spaces for drive-up and pickup that it was unbelievable. So I think every restaurant has kind of navigated towards operating that way a lot more. So we're going to be working hand in hand with that.
It also looks like there's a lot of green space.
Yes, yes, a lot of green space, trying to protect green space where we can. It's got great visibility off the bypass on that interchange, which we love that. I think it'll be, the architecture's nice that we have standards as far as the PMDP. So we're just very excited about the whole thing.
Thank you. In all seriousness, I don't love the storage as part of this, so if they could.
Mayor, we understand, and actually the storage is very intentionally put down at a low point down next to the substation. We're really trying to place it in the back as much as we can. Part of the reasoning behind that, we would like to put a field there and we're going to work towards everything we can to do there. We just can't guarantee it right now, we want to see the other stuff happen. So just working for the best we can get, so.
What will be your target sport to put in that facility?
It's going to be a variety, I think you'll, you're going to see basketball, you're going to see soccer, you're going to see baseball training. There will be some smaller tournaments and things like that. I don't think, when you say tournaments, that's kind of a scary term or it can be from a traffic standpoint. The size of the facility will constrain that to some degree. So the parking that we have around the facility is sized specifically for that. And then we'll have, we know we'll have some overlap where people go to the restaurant and kind of just park there instead and kind of do that kind of thing. But it, we will have some smaller tournaments, but they won't be large tournaments. I don't know the answer to that question, I'll have to get that answer for you and come back at the next meeting.
It will be what?
Promoting them. I don't know that. I can find out, I'll find out.
Jim, I, I called Paige the other night and I was at a facility that you named, having grandkids in football, basketball, baseball and traveling and cheer. I see these complexes that are being built and some of them are quite large. And I'm really excited about it and I see that it could service a lot of the, the needs for our community up here. The other night when I called Paige, it was at maximum capacity. And it was, the one I went to was in Franklin, Kentucky, near Bowling Green. And there was thousands of people there and it was for the cheering. And then once the kids come off the stage, you know, there's a whole nother group of people that was pulling up to go into the facility. So I'm excited about that and I think it would work at the location that you're putting it in. Thank you.
Other questions?
Have we already got a motion?
No.
My move, we send it on to council.
Motion, Ms. Love sending it on and second by Councilman Fan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Accord. Ordinance number zero-two-two-one-two-dash-seventy-one.
Okay, this council, this next item is quest for rezoning with the master plan for Laurelwood Park. Laurelwood Park is, uh, located, would be located, uh, east of Southwater Avenue with the, what's currently the end of Lorraine Drive. And it also would extend up to, um, Driver's Lane. It's an unusual shaped par- parcel, as you can see there, comprising twenty-three-point-two-eight acres. A portion of the property is currently zoned R fifteen and then of course, a smaller portion is zoned R ten and they're requesting MRO zoning with a preliminary master development plan for mostly a townhome lot subdivision. And it's kind of small scale, but it mostly a townhome lot subdivision, but they would have four lots that would be larger, uh, standard, more standard lots that are similar in size to what you have up and down Lorraine Drive that would, uh, be on the extreme southwest side of the development. It would include an extension of Lorraine Drive and/or, uh, Timberwood, uh, Drive where it intersects with Driver's Lane. So it would provide a through ability for trips to, um, access both out to, uh, either Driver's Lane where they could go, uh, either north, south, east, or west from there and/or out to, uh, Highway one oh nine. The applicant is looking to construct with this, if, if ordinance is approved, they're looking to construct a hundred and twenty, um, nine u- or, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's not correct, that four-point-oh, uh, uh, seven units an acre, a hundred and three units. And again, four of those would be a standard lot size and the remainder of those would be townhomes. They would be constructing public streets. The, the reason for the distribution of the lots on the property is because there is both a lot of utility lines, the overhead wires that extend through portions of the property. And then there is also an intermittent creek that flows roughly from the northeast portion of the property to the southwest side of the property. So, uh, the prop, the area is designated as suburban in the character area map, which is part of the new comp plan. There was a lot of discussion about this development. Uh, the applicant made some design changes to accommodate some requests, including, of course, the larger lots that you see on the southwest portion. There will be, um, more than half the property will be in open space and that includes buffer yards as well as the buffers along the creek. Uh, this would be local streets, it would not be collector's streets. The comp plan does indicate that some, someday, uh, Wayne Street is extended to the east, that that could be designated as a collector's street and might be the appropriate location for a future traffic signal if warranted. This location now, uh, traffic would be able to access Highway one oh nine at the new Nichols Lane, uh, traffic signal as well. The planning commission did discuss in detail a lot of the ramifications and so forth of this plan and then voted, uh, by a four-two vote to recommend approval of this rezoning and master development plan. That would show you a better rendering of the location of the lots and the phasing that they're proposing to do in the development. Of course, phase two would be on the east side. This would be a rendering of the townhome units and they would meet the brick and stone requirements of, of the code. And that's a color rendering of those units. Back up.
Mr. McCord, can you show us where the four homes are?
Uh, yeah. Doesn't work on the screen, so approaches.
The four that he's going to be.
Four homes, ninety-eight townhome.
These are the larger lots, these four, right here on the western end, which is adjacent to Lorraine Drive where the single-family homes currently are. She has these connoisseur. These, these simple platted lots. The applicant is in the, uh, audience tonight and might want to add some additional information about this.
I think that would be good. Can we hear from the applicant?
Hi there, Cal Gentry with Civil Land Company. Uh, here to discuss Laurelwood Park development. It's a residential development southeast of the new Publix on one oh nine. Um, the main entrance for the community will come off Driver's Lane lined up with Timberwood Drive. The original tract that we were under contract to purchase is the southern, more bulky piece. And we realized that putting all of that traffic on the Lorraine was too burdensome. So we're acquiring that additional rectangular piece northbound and it's mostly road through there in order to give a main entrance and access to the signal, the new signal at Nichols Lane. We feel it'll take a lot of the burden off of the existing neighborhood. The development as proposed provides extensions to a long-range transportation plan, taking Timberwood north, south, and then allowing for Wayne Drive or Lorraine to go east, west into that undeveloped track to the east. Um, we do meet, as Bill said, meet the guidelines of Plan Gallatin. Uh, this area is indicated up to five units per acre and we're right at four. And the land both east and west of us, um, is both indicated for up to fifteen units per acre. So we feel like we're being better stewards, staying off the creeks, leaving a lot of green space, over fifty percent, uh, undeveloped on this track.
I'm sorry, did you say fifty percent?
Yes, ma'am. Working, as Bill said, we worked with the planning commission, um, to try to ease some of the pressure on the Lorraine Drive access point. Uh, we did remove quite a few townhomes and replace those with single-family lots. And those lots are the average between the R fifteen zone and the MRO zone we're asking for. So it should be a good transitional use. We had a divided median connection there to try to slow traffic and we're installing a raised, uh, crosswalk, which makes it very, you have to go very slow over it to, uh, to get over the top of it into that section of the neighborhood. All of those things to reduce the number of cars that will go that way because we want them to go Driver's Lane to the signal. And then also to make sure they're going extremely slow when they move through there. Uh, we also agreed, work with engineering for any other traffic controlling or, uh, other things that they want in any of the adjoining neighborhoods to try to reduce the flow or reduce the speed.
Are there only one car garages?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question. You just mentioned that you had lowered the number. How many units did you lower that by?
Um, we originally, I believe, had a hundred and eight units proposed for the whole development. And now we're at one oh two, but four of those are the single families. So we reduced by ten townhomes.
Reduced by ten townhomes, but added in four.
Single family.
Single family homes.
So reduced it by six.
What about overflow parking?
We provided parking internally for visitors and whatnot. Uh, they do all have, uh, the driveways are long enough to hold a vehicle, the garages are large enough to hold a vehicle. And then we have extra parking spaces scattered throughout the development for visitors.
You know how many extra parking pla- parking places you have?
Mr. Fan, I can look real quick. Um, I think it's in the range of a dozen or so, plus or minus, between twelve, fifteen, somewhere in that range.
This is a question, but an observation. I drove down Driver's Lane and that's another narrow country road. And I personally don't feel like townhouses fit in with that area.
Understand, yes, ma'am. Our traffic, we are, we do have a traffic study underway and if we need to make some improvements to Driver's Lane, we will be doing those.
Bill, what was the concerns of the planning commission that, uh, voted no?
Well, initially their concerns were that there was townhomes developed or proposed on the, you know, southwest portion adjacent to the single-family home zoning on Wayne or Lorraine Drive. So that's why the applicant did go back and makes some of those changes. They also dropped another unit, I think, elsewhere. Uh, then one, of course, the traffic calming is, is an issue as well. In your agenda package, there is a, uh, trip generation comparison of what types of trips and number of trips would be generated under the existing zoning if they develop the property under the existing zoning and/or with a conditional use as opposed to the proposal that they have. And it's basically the same trip generation. So it's just a different, uh, townhome units don't generate as many trips as a single-family home does. That's why you can get more single-family homes, uh, comparatively with the same number of trips, or, excuse me, townhome units with same number of trips. Single-family homes generate almost ten units, ten average daily trips a day, whereas townhomes is about five and a half. Because of the size of the units, basically.
How many people tend to live there?
Those are based on long-term, uh, studies that have been done by Institute of Transportation in the year, engineers for many, many years. And that trip generation rate has really not changed much at all.
Hey, that property that's, uh, to the east, I guess, does that front, like, is that access to that off Odom's Bend? I'm, you know how great I am with.
It's, it's a long distance way over to, to get to Odom's Bend Road. That's going to be.
Where, where, where is the access to that property that's to the east of that? Not what we're talking about, but what lays? I'm, I'm thinking in terms of what does the future of that area look like? And that's why I'm trying to figure out exactly how much distance there is between there and Odom's Bend.
Uh, it is designated suburban character area and then, you know, they have some, um, what's the future employment center character area as well, further on to the east. So, um, that, that suburban would be supporting densities of, uh, basically thirty-five. I thought that's what you were asking about, what can be developed there. Sorry.
But I appreciate you.
Well, it, um, I'll be glad to try to answer. It's vacant property now, is that what you mean? Like, why not?
Okay, the answer to my question would be yes, so. Yeah, it looks like all that property, um, between there, there's no access to it between essentially Lorraine and Odom's Bend. I was just thinking, what might somebody bring to us for Odom's Bend at some point in the future? That's what I was thinking. And talking about, of course, like what I talked about, that I would like to see on Odom's Bend and how that may flow from one to the other. That was, that was the pertinence of my question.
It's, it's basically agriculture and large estates.
Yeah. I'm just thinking what one day it might be.
Going to make a motion to remove this on the council?
Motion to what?
Send it to council.
Send it to council? Okay. Do you have a second? I have a second. Any discussion?
I really don't have a, a problem seeing it at council, but I, I, I just, I'm kind of with Linda. I just, uh, I just don't feel that it's really right for the area out there. Will you be able to see this development? I know where Councilman Kemp lives and I think this is pretty much close to relatively where he lives, but will you be able to see this development from the new one oh nine?
I believe the topography will keep you from seeing it from one oh nine. We do, we will have units that ride up by Driver's Lane, but I don't think you'll be able to see it from one oh nine just because, um, the land goes up and over. But I haven't, I haven't studied that in particular and get you that answer, though.
Do you be willing to put more houses in that area rather than, uh, take some more of the townhouses out?
We can review that. There's a, we can review that, Mr. Fennell.
And, um, Bill, we was a four-two vote, is what you said?
That's correct.
There a lot of discussion on this particular piece of property?
There was, and initially it was deferred and the redesign came back and addressed those issues.
They make concessions.
So it, it took, um, two months to go through the planning commission.
So the first reading would be when? Or the new council will be in? I'm fine with moving it on for the new council can weigh in on this also.
What about the roads? Who, who's going to be responsible for these narrow roads and stuff? Is this, is that, are these county roads?
Well, these, no, these will be new streets that will be built to city standards. So all these are new roads are going to be built to cities.
I think so. Is he, is, what about Driver's? He said they would do improvements if required, but I don't think we need to. Right?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Pardon me?
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I said, he said that they would do, um, improvements to Driver's Lane if required as shown by the traffic.
That's, those types of things.
And I'm guessing that would be between Driver's Lane and one oh nine, not the whole spans.
There will be a traffic study there, we'll be preparing so that would identify any deficiencies in, uh, area roadways.
Got one more question. So you said that concessions were made at planning and did they still, was, after that, was the vote four to two?
Right.
Bill was not.
Not unanimous.
I, I think, I mean, my personal opinion, I think there's some that we need to defer on until a little later. Instead of killing it, uh, still extending on, I, I would just, that's just me, I would just like to defer it to let the new council work, I mean, work on it. I didn't mean work, work on it.
And I second his deferment since I made a motion to, uh, consider it council.
When are you wanting to defer it to the next, the first workshop session of the new council?
I think that would give more time to clear up some of the misunderstanding about it.
So we need to remove the initial motion?
I believe that Councilman Fan, in effect, withdrew his motion.
I withdraw my motion.
And the deferral takes precedent. So we have now a motion and a second to defer.
There's a motion to defer by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell.
Fan.
Fan, sorry. Okay, now is the discussion.
Yes, now you can have this discussion on the deferral.
Cal, you've always brought us some nice properties and you've always, uh, uh, done nice things in Gallatin. This one just, I just don't have that feeling right there with so many townhouses versus the housing on the property. And, and I think what Councilman, um, John D. Alexander was trying to do is put it back and allow some of the new members to weigh in on this also. And, um, to see if we could have a plan that we would all be more comfortable with.
And I agree with his wisdom on that. We're happy to accept the deferral, let the new council work on it and answer some more of the questions.
And thank you.
So is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of deferring?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously for deferring. All right, Mr. McCord again. This is the resolution number R-two-two-one-two-dash-eighty-five.
Hey, council, I'm going to present these two items together and they really do have, need to go together. And this is a request for an annexation and a plan of service. As you recall, we modified our annexation review process where we no longer essentially will entertain the zoning aspect of it, but I will discuss a little bit of that because that's more, makes it, uh, easier for y'all to make a decision. that's more, makes it easier for y'all to make a decision as to potential impacts. And of course, the plan of service has to rely upon some concept plan to be able to proceed with that. So from that standpoint, this would not be an item that you would be voting on the zoning or plan of development, but simply on the annexation and plan of service. The zoning would catch up later if you move forward with the annexation. You, of course, got a lot of public input on this issue tonight, but the applicant is looking to annex a 77 and a half acre parcel of land on the east side of Dobbin's Pike, about a half mile north of the existing city limits, which is just north of Albert Gallatin Avenue. The property is contiguous to the city, so it is not an enclave. The city, part of Triple Creek Park property is located to the east boundary of this property, so it does provide that connection to the existing city boundary. It is located north of the middle school and the elementary school on the north side of Hicks Lane. It's across the street from Hollywood Hills, and I can't remember the name of the other development there that's adjacent to Hollywood Hills. But, and it would have access both to Hicks Lane, near the middle school, as well as their primary access would be to and from Dobbin's Pike. This area is designated on the comp plan as suburban, so when the comp plan was recently adopted by the planning commission this year, earlier this year, they designated this property for a suburban development pattern, which would allow up to five units per acre. Mostly three to five units per acre is the recommended density for properties developing in the suburban character area. The applicant does intend to develop the property, redevelop the property as a typical suburban-type subdivision. And right what you have now are properties, with the exception of the city of Gallatin on the east side, you have properties in the county that range in size from really many farms to ranchettes and small lots. There is a large tower, and you see that on this rendering here, which shows that circle area, and that's the fall zone of the tower. So there's a communications tower there that they would not use, obviously, for development of the subdivision, but it would be contained within an open space area. Seen that one? The lots would be laid out in this configuration. So what you see off of Dobbin's Pike is a road that would be constructed kind of in the high point of Dobbin's Pike to maximize site distance along that road, and it would be a median that would provide for two ways in and out of the subdivision to the first intersection. And as you can see, they would retain a creek that extends through the middle of the property, and that would be all contained in open space. Everything you see in the green would be open space, stormwater ponds in the darker green or aqua color. So a lot of the trees that you see out there, particularly along the buffer zones, and especially along the creek, would be retained. And so those major trees and heritage-type trees where those would be located would be kept. The road network would interconnect and intersect there where the private road and Hicks Lane, private road that serves the middle school, and Hicks Lane intersect. So there won't be a direct access only to Hicks Lane. The applicant is here tonight and will be able to describe in more detail their negotiations with the school board on how that roadway could operate. So the interconnected street pattern would allow for at least two access points to and from, and then potentially, in the future, an access up to the north if that property sells or redevelops. Of course, you can see the tower location in the northeast corner would all be left as in, within open space tracks. So they're proposing 193 lots with this proposed development. Again, I want to emphasize that you would not to consider not be moving a zoning action forward. This would only be an annexation action. We prepared a plan of service, which is included in your agenda package, which evaluates the potential impact. All infrastructure would be constructed by the developer at the developer's expense, and then it would be, just like other subdivisions and developments in the city, would then be after construction, and a time after construction before everything is finally eligible for acceptance by the city, would all be, again, maintained by the developer. The planning commission did review this request, and that took place in July. Planning commission had five members present at that meeting, and it was a three-two vote not to recommend the annexation and plan of service. I think some of the reasons that they, what they were saying is that the density, the unsurety of Hicks Lane, and the impacts of Hicks Lane, and the unsurety of being able to move traffic on the private road that serves the middle school, and that this density was a little higher density than what you have in this area. Although, I do want to point out that right across the street on Dobbin's Pike, you have Hollywood Hills and that other development, which is similar, even more dense than this area would be. So those were the basic issues of concern.
I feel kind of like Hicks Lane is going to give us the same kind of a problem as Berry Lane or Douglas, was it Douglas Road? That we were, we had so much discussion about a small, little country road with, that's that narrow. And again, 193 units on that coming out, I know that's just an emergency, but somebody mentioned that, you know, if it's open and people are going to use it, whether it's for emergencies or not. I don't really like the fact that it's, those school buses have a hard time going back and forth, and the traffic is bad in the mornings. Dobbin's Pike is bad in the morning and in the afternoons. I sometimes go over that way, you know, cutting up through Albert Gallatin, and I see the traffic is really intense in that area. And I feel kind of, I love the green space. I like that, that there's so much green space. I don't like 193 units coming in and out on those roads, though.
I think maybe we'll want to listen to the developer.
I'll be pretty brief, because I think there've been some questions, and Ms. Love brought up some questions that we need to more thoroughly address. And it's going to be hard for me to do that without showing some exhibits. And we've done a traffic study. We've looked at this very carefully with a lot of folks, but tonight I'm just going to ask that we just defer this. Let me pull those exhibits together so I can answer y'all's questions. I've been back listening to the neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We want to do the right thing. We do like this development. We do like the open space. We do like the fit for the area. We like walkability to parkland, which the city owns and is adjacent and contiguous on the east side. We like all that, but I need to get some better exhibits back to kind of explain some things. I'm not going to be able to talk it through with the words, so I'd like to ask that we just, if y'all could defer this tonight, I appreciate it.
Can I ask one question just to satisfy my curiosity? What kind of homes do you envision for the property?
We've got in the PMDP, we've got homes, Ryan Homes was the builder that was looking at it in the past. It's actually, I think, the pattern book has that on there. They've got a mixture of brick and stone on the front. They're very nice homes. Each one of these homes, the way this is laid out, has open space in the backyard for most of them, about 80% of them. So it's kind of like they've got a park in their backyard, but they've got a smaller lot to maintain. The other thing that we've preserved, not trying to get off the home conversation, but we've preserved a cemetery that's in the middle of the site, and that's where the Meyer's name comes from, is some of the family.
You don't have to do that.
Well, we need to do that. We don't always embrace the legacy. We want to embrace that and preserve the heritage as much as we can.
Not holding you to it, because I know it could change at any point. What, in today's market, what do you think the price point might be on that?
Oh, man. I don't, that's way outside of my range, but I don't know. I think they're, I don't know. I'd have to ask, but I'll...
The square footage will it be?
They're in the neighborhood of 2,000 square feet, roughly, something like that.
About 400,000.
That's what I was going to say.
I've seen many single-family home neighborhoods, and I was just curious what kind of prices we might be looking at there.
400.
And great walkable access to the school, walkable access to the parkland on the east. I think there's, but there are concerns that some of them have mentioned tonight, and I want to make sure I can show exhibits and make sure I can explain that very well, so y'all can see what it is. And I really think to do that, to try to push it through without looking at those exhibits and explaining that, just does, that's not the right thing.
Have you met with any of the citizens?
We've, we've not had a neighborhood meeting. We've, and when I show the exhibits, this will explain this, we have met with a couple of the neighbors around the site, but I wouldn't say we've met with every single person around the site.
Motion for...
How much time would you want to defer that?
If we could just defer it for one, one cycle, and I'll...
So the first, first work session of the year?
For the next one.
In my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Fennell to defer it to our next session, which would be January 10th. Is that sound right? Okay. And second by Councilman Alexander. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It didn't sit down too long. Right, 67. Okay, we're into resolution number R. 2212-87.
Can you all not be so noisy, please? It's kind of distracting. Thank you.
Mr. McCord?
This one should be quite simple. Applicant is requesting approval of an indemnity and hold harmless agreement with a certificate of liability insurance to plant trees in the right-of-way of the paddock at Kennesaw Farms Phase One. This is currently under construction. Many other phases in Kennesaw Farms have a similar agreement where they're planting trees. They have this.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Blood. Resolution R. 2212-84.
Yeah, I'm seeking to approve the supervisor position to a higher grade, and this is due to currently, we have a position called mechanic three, which reports to the supervisor, and they're in the same grade.
Motion for...
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stewart, ordinance number 02212-68.
Thank you, Councilor. Cister, building official, this is an ordinance waiving certain construction-related fees for the Sumner County Courthouse and parking garage. This is plan review fees and building permit fees. No inspection fees, no subcontractor fees, just the plan review and the, and the building permit.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'd like to say that I think maybe the mayor and the attorney would like to speak on this.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I do, in looking at it, I had a phone call from the county mayor. I think they want, in writing, that we are committed versus we keep telling them we're going to do what we said we would do. And so, Susan, we worked these today, divided into a resolution and an ordinance, just to make clear what we agree that our commitment is. And then in the ordinance would be the waiving of the fees. Susan and I agree with this, and I appreciate her suggesting this. So just the resolution, because that way it would only have to pass one reading, because unfortunately, he keeps pushing, bringing this to a meeting until he is, you know, satisfied with what the city's doing. So this resolution will just make us have to go to one reading in January. The ordinance will go through two on the waiving of the fees, but...
And I do have, if Ms. Smiley can assist me, well, I guess we can take the ordinance first, because it was in the packet. And all that we did in the ordinance was we pulled out two of the wear-as clauses. So the ordinance now is really just dealing with the waiver of the fees. And then the resolution talks more about the total commitment that the city has made and is making. Yes, the resolution spells it out a little bit more clearly, I think. And so the, right now, if you'll just take up this ordinance, waiving the fees, the only thing that's been changed from this ordinance that was in your packet was we pulled out the wear-as clauses dealing with the amounts that were committed that don't deal with the fees. So now the ordinance is just dealing with the waiver of the fees.
Make a motion that we approve the waiver of the fee.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the waiver of the fee by Councilman Alexander and second by Councilman Fennell.
And I do also want to, I think it's spelled out clearly in the ordinance, but I want everyone to understand, these are the fees that are waived to date. And there could be additional fees if Sumner County or the general contractor has additional, additional fees. It does not, and Chuck, correct me if I'm, if I'm right about this or wrong, we are not waiving anything for subcontractors.
Nothing for subcontractors and nothing for inspections.
It also does not include the jail pod. That continues to be a discussion between the city and the county. And to be clear, I think, I think we are contributing a tremendous amount, because this has been so much work for our codes department. And, you know, the fire only escalated how much work it is for our codes department. But, you know, they continue to ask for more and more, and I think that this is probably the limit of what we might be able to do, and it is substantial with us waiving all of these fees. When they first asked for the $3 million, the waiving of fees was not a discussion, was not an ask, because this is beyond that, and it's probably going to wind up being many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably in excess of a million.
It's going to have to go up, but as our discussion this morning in Department head meetings, without the parking garage, the courthouse is a white elephant down there. You can't CEO it, because it can't be the city ordinance for parking without it. So it behooves the city to try to work this out, for us to work, have a parking garage for the courthouse and for the citizens of the city.
And we were, and to be clear, this discussion about the waiving of fees did happen quite some time ago. I mean, that last summer, maybe? And, and Mr. Stewart and some, I think Councilman Overton was there, and I was there, and some commissioners and stuff, and we talked about it. But we did say at the time that it would have to go to council for approval, but we haven't ever done it. So that's why we're doing it. And then the resolution explains that our initial commitment was the 1.8 for the courthouse, the garage, 1.8 for the garage, and then 1.2 for the Smith Street. Of course, that 1.2 is going to go up for Smith Street. And it also articulates that we had articulated, I mean, that we had appropriated 1.2 to date for the, no, 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 no. The 1 million, that we had appropriated $1 million for the widening of Smith Street, and we had appropriated 1.5 for the garage. That was in the bond that we issued several years ago. And our thought was that we would budget for that from the general fund when we get to the point that we're actually using that money. But that's, and that's caused some confusion, both internally and externally, because we had an appropriation of a different... But that's, and that's caused some confusion both internally and externally because we had an appropriation of a different amount than what our total commitment was. And so it's kind of spelled out in here. I think it makes it clear.
And you've also appropriated additional 600,000 for cost overruns.
If there are cost overruns, and that was, um, what we did back last fall some point. So we've already done that and they have that, so.
Now, the, the total commitment to date, it's set out in the resolution, is 4,700,000, 700,
7,000.
7,000, 400, 4,7235.50 that the city is committed to. So this is our financial kit commitment. And then there's another paragraph that says that we are going to partner with the county to assist them to see the fruition of the completion of the courthouse and parking garage, just so they know we are partnering with them. We want this to happen. We're financially committed and committed otherwise.
And that, that $4 million is our initial commitment, the additional 600 if there is a cost overrun, and the fees that we have waived to date. That's where that number comes from.
Can we not put a cap?
$7,000.
4,7235.50. And it's in the resolution. I've handed out to you, and that was on, on the screen. And it, I'm sorry, if you look in the warehouse clauses and you add all those numbers up, that's where that number comes from.
On those fees, can we not just put a cap on that and say we're, that we're going to waive this amount of fees at this time?
No, ma'am, because they keep adding fees in when they call us back out there for other things. So it's a, it's a running total that, uh, it's so much per inspection. And there's a lot of parts and pieces that's still not there yet. You look at the building, you think that building's a long way. It's not. It's a lot more work in that building. There's a lot of fire, low voltage, alarms, securities. There's a lot of stuff still going on down there.
Can't say we only waive
Uh, to a certain amount.
Yes.
What we, what we're waiving here is the, the plan review fees and the building permit fees. That's just
Realizing the
Got some dedications. Oh, yeah. I got four people handling it. They're down there every day. Yeah. Not there all day, but they're there every day. And then, as I pointed back to the chief, he's got some investment there too now.
I, I would like to, uh, vote on these separately. Vote on the waiver of fees, the ordinance waiving the fees first, and then, uh, the resolution stating Gallatin's commitment. Okay, well, we already have that in discussion. We have, and now we can vote on that. Yes. Okay. Uh, so is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? This is just moving it to council.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, move on. And now for the resolution and its resolution number R 2301-1. I don't know if Lori can get that back on the screen, but you also have that in front of you. And that's just setting out Gallatin's commitment.
We've already discussed.
Yes. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move that on to council also, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that is by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman, uh, Fennell. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11. Ms. McCauley?
Okay, so tonight we were going to discuss amending ordinance 02205-20 related to alcoholic beverages. And this stemmed from last week's meeting. Um, where, um, we were approving a certificate of compliance. And you wanted someone to appear, and they were not here. So we're having a special called meeting. We're not going to get into that certificate of compliance. But based on that conversation last week, you wanted to make a few amendments. And I'm not certain exactly what all you want to amend, but, um, I think what you were looking at was basically in section 3-52 of the code. And it would be in subsection E. Right now it says, city council may require an applicant for a retail liquor certificate of compliance to appear before the council to address any matter related to the applicant's application and/or business. City council may also request that the applicant furnish additional information regarding the applicant's application and/or business. And what I, what I think you wanted to say, and I, I don't know for certain because I didn't get a lot of, uh, of feedback, but I think what you wanted to say and what I would propose is that we change that subsection E to say, all applicants for a retail liquor certificate of compliance shall appear before the council to address any matter related to the applicant's application and/or business. And city council may request, and the applicant may furnish additional information regarding the application and/or business. I think that's what you want to change. Also in subsection B, there is a typo because it says that we, that city council shall approve the issuance of any retail liquor certificate of compliance to an applicant who has satisfied the requirements for such certificate set forth in TCA 57-3-208 and this article subject to section 3-54, and that should be 3-55. So I know that also needs to be changed, and I think there may be
I just have one thing that I want to offer to this council. I brought this up a couple of times. And since that time, I've had an absent council member, Councilman Hayes, bring it up to me. Uh, and actually, I think actually, well, no, I'll tell you, it was an audience member who first brought it up to me. But, um, certainly Lori Smiley and I have discussed it, that it really makes sense to measure that radius by a mile because when new roads get built, that distance changes, and that is just going to be a nightmare to figure out over a long period of time. So that's my, my suggestion. Um, Councilman Hayes apparently is supportive of that at this point. I would just bring it to this council.
Paige, I, I am also, I, I had somebody sent me a mapage of what the effect of the radius versus a straight line. Uh, I have abstained through this whole thing, but, uh, I, I do feel after looking at this, I think we'd be better in ourselves if we went to a radius of what you're suggesting in Councilman Hayes.
Just otherwise, we'd have to keep track of what roads were built when and how the distance changed and who was okay. And I mean, I just think the radius is the safe way to go.
That's fine with me.
And that is in section 3-55 subsection B. And so I think what you're wanting to, right now it says, located within one mile of an existing retail liquor store, such distance, distance to be measured by the shortest drivable, drivable route. And I think what you're saying is you want it a one mile radius. And to come up with language, language for that. Is that correct? And Ms. Smiley's coming forward.
I would just ask that, um, and it's, this sounds crazy, but we actually have one that is, what, 12 feet, um, outs, you know, within that radius. So the question would be, is that like a, um, a center
From what point?
parcel or the front door, a mile of the front door? I mean, they are
I don't think it can be a front door because in a lot of cases, a front door won't be established yet when someone comes with the certificate of compliance.
So the driveway, you know, the, off the road, the main, where the main driveway would be, I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but we actually
How about edge of property line?
Which edge?
Oh, yeah, that's true. Dang.
Typically, it is measured from door to door. That's the way it's, that's always been in the past.
Or the parking space.
Then we should tell them it has to be from door to door, and at this point, the front door has to be, you know.
They have to establish, you know, on the, on the, um, parcel where that building, they expect that building to be. I don't know, Bill, if that can be. They have to define that before it gets approved. I don't know. It just, we're that close.
I think it should be from the front door. That's my opinion. And while, while we're, while we're on the subject, if I can just do a little bit before we move on, reeducation about the certificate of compliance, I just want to remind this council, and I know we have a special called meeting after this. But if you look at 3-55, location restriction on, on retail liquor stores, those are the things that an applicant has to meet. And if they meet those things, the city is required by law, unless they don't meet something in A, B, or C to issue that certificate of compliance. We're not issuing, we're not issuing them the license. They go to the state for the license. This is just the certificate of compliance. So I just want to make that clear. I think there was a little bit of confusion last week. I just want to clarify that.
Actually, almost conflicts with us requiring them to be here, but also
Well, but there are some things that Because in C, there is a, a traffic issue. You might need to know how big it's going to be, what, how much traffic it's going to generate. There are some, some issues that you may want to ask them about. Do they have any questions? I think there are three things that you are directing me to, trying to ordinance to correct. Is that accurate?
Change these things like the radius instead of the point of mileage, does that affect?
It will not affect anybody that has, it will not affect anyone that is currently, currently has their certificate. Anyone like tonight does not affect them. It was, this will be moving forward.
I do think that they should be there to speak instead of May.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so I, I just need a motion to move it to council, and I will draft and put it in your agenda packet under ordinance amendment.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love, to move it to council.
That's all three?
All three.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Obstaining. Okay, so we have, um, one, two, three, four, five. Well, yes, I'm one abstaining. Thank you. Okay, so now we are going into other business. Any other
No, 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 no.
Nope.
Number 12.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We have charter, Article 3, Section 1. Ms. McCauley?
Yes. I am handing out to you a proposed ordinance. So last week during our, uh, council meeting, we discussed under other business, uh, a potential need to amend our charter. As you will recall, currently in our charter, in our charter, Article 3, Section 1, do you have that pulled up, Lori? Thank you. There is a, currently a section that reads, let me try to find it. Neither the mayor nor members of the city council shall hold any other elective or appointed public office except for that of notary public or be otherwise employed by the city of Gallatin. If the mayor or any member of the city council shall accept employment with the city of Gallatin or any other elective or appointed public office, his or her seat on the council shall become vacant and must be filled as set forth in this charter. And you will recall that the discussion centered around what is a public office. And I explained to you that a public office is defined by law as, um, an office that is compensated, that is for a definite period of time, and that is set by statute. And so there, um, was some discussion about what do we want to do moving forward? And my suggestion was that we take out the appointed office. And I do want to say, I've had some questions this week. Well, we just discovered that somebody was on the resource authority. How did we just discover that? No, we didn't just discover that. That has been approved by this body since that, um, commission was in effect. There are three county commissioners that serve on that body. There is one person from Hennessyville Boma that serves on that body, and it's always been that one person from city of Gallatin governing body has served on, on that. Then there was, um, you know, some, some other, so I'm just saying there are, there is someone that's from our council, Mr. Hayes, Councilman Hayes is on, well, he's not now, he has resigned, but he was on the resource authority, and he resigned because it was very close whether or not it's a public office. It's not, their duties are not set by statute, but they're defined by law. And so he believed that the right thing to do was to resign from that board, and it's my understanding he has done that. And I know that Mr. Fennell found out through the process that he was on, um, a, a board that the county commission or that the county mayor had pointed him to. I think you have requested your
I never went to a meeting. I didn't even know I was on the board.
Right, you, you advised last night that, I mean, last week, that you requested your name be removed from that, that you hadn't accepted that position. And then we had Mr. Jovance, who has just been elected, who, um, is, has been appointed to the airport authority. And by the legal definition, that does not meet public office. And so there's a lot of confusion about what constitutes an appointed public office. So it is my suggestion and recommendation that we just remove that from our charter. Just remove it. Uh, I think the council indicated last week they would like to keep, uh, the elective part in there, that you don't want people to serve on this, uh, city council and have another elected public office. And so I have drafted this ordinance. Um, that is, I think, Lori can bring that back up for me, please. That does simply that. If you just, you just, if you can go straight to the, um, be it ordained section, all we're doing is taking out or appointed in notary public. So that it's still going to read, finally, if you make this move, it will read, neither the mayor nor members of the city council shall hold any other elective public office or be otherwise employed by the city of Gallatin. If the mayor or any member of the city council shall accept employment with the city of Gallatin or any other elective, elective public office, his or her seat on the council, on the city council shall become vacant and must be filled as set forth in this charter. I think that would clarify for everyone, um, what they can and cannot do, and it would correct, um, some issues. We also have, as I advised last week, we're required by law to have someone from this body be on the planning commission, and we are required by law to have someone on the electric board. So our charter conflicts with state law. So we've got to get that straightened out. To me, this is the simplest, most straightforward way to do it.
I've asked a few times, but I'll bring it up again. I really would like it to be some language that says no one should serve in a, I don't know, statutorily established role unless it's as a representative of the city of Gallatin. You keep saying this is the right way to do it, so.
I think that, I think that can cause some confusion. Now, by, by law, this is, uh, you know, we're kind of really taking a deep dive here. But as I told you last week, the state constitution has a provision that doesn't allow, um, someone to serve in, in two offices that's for state, um, elected offices. But there's the whole, there's another area of the law that you can't serve in two incompatible offices. So it doesn't mean that you can go out and get on a board that's going to be against the city of Gallatin. You still, you take an oath to uphold the office of councilman or mayor for the city of Gallatin. You have to uphold that oath. And so if, if someone accepts an appointment that's incompatible, um, we can go to the attorney general and have the attorney, attorney general issue an opinion. But I, I don't think that we need to put that in our charter.
So, Ms. McCauley, so back in 2016, when I first got elected on the city council, then if I would have, uh, I could have remained on the airport authority if I would have pressed the issue.
That's correct. If anyone had researched the issue, but that has never, you know,
Generally accepted opinion.
That's correct.
It's even in my notebook of guidance for boards and
I was trying to comply.
You were trying to be, um, cooperative and compliant, and I respect that.
So what about being on a board in a different country for a homeowners association?
I don't believe that's an appointed public office.
All right.
And like I said, as the mayor said, uh, there was a general understanding of, of what could and couldn't happen. We had them, it was in the mayor's notebook as to who was to be appointed, who wasn't, and I think people just resigned. And that's been going on for way before I got here. And so we're just trying to get it straightened out and make it make sense.
How long has a representative been on the resource authority board, for example?
I think since the inception of resources.
As long as this existed, the most we can As long as this existed, the most we can tell.
And so when this, when, when the language was crafted, the charter probably was already, it was in existence, and it just didn't get fixed at that time. And no one thought about it because they were appointed from this body. And so it wasn't seen that it was an incompatible office. It wasn't really seen as an appointed public office because this body appointed.
Yeah, I'm sure the intent-
But it is inconsistent with all.
I'm sure the intent of the charter was not to prohibit someone serving as representative of Gallatin on any board, authority, committee, et cetera. But at any rate, this does clean it up. I'm supportive of that. I do want to ask this body about another amendment.
Can we vote on this first, please?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Is, do we have a motion?
I don't think we do.
Yeah, we have a motion, and we have it second.
No, I don't think we do.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Alexander. Do we have any further discussion?
And this is just to move it to council?
Moving it to council. Uh, all in favor to move it to council? Anyone opposed? Motion carries to council.
Now, Mayor.
Okay. So for many, many years, the City of Gallatin, from the time that it was a tiny little town to the size that it is now, has had a fabulous judge and recorder taking care of so much of our important city business. Well, our city has grown to a pretty large size. I think we're the only city remaining in the state of Tennessee that does not require that our judge be an attorney. And I think it's time that we, as a city, change our charter so that it says that the City of Gallatin will, the Gallatin City Council will appoint a part-time attorney to serve, serve as judge. And, and we would appoint someone to serve as a recorder for the City of Gallatin. Now, it would not affect Judge and Recorder Kitchell because she's been reelected, and it would not affect her. But it would happen with the next time that we had a recorder or judge position available.
Connie, I, I mean, how much, uh, when is your term over with?
I've been sworn in for her next one, yeah, so four years.
So I'll have four more years.
Okay.
So we're talking about two positions?
Yes.
Okay.
One would be a part-time, a part, I keep saying attorney. It would want to be an attorney serving as a part-time city judge. That's typically how it's done in cities all around us.
Appointed.
Uh huh.
Appointed by the mayor or appointed by the council?
Appointed by the council.
Okay.
And then, and then also, I mean, within that, when we get to that, there would also probably have to be some changes to our legal department because you would have to have a clerk that helped with that in some way. I, I see restructuring happening all around when that change does happen, both in how the recording happens, how the finances happen, how the court happens, so.
So we're talking about amending Article 7 and Article 10.
Our charter.
Of our charter.
Okay.
And it would basically be making the recorder a department head. And I don't know if Ms. Kitchell would like to speak on that at all and say whether or not you are in favor or not of this happening?
Yes, I am. I think that would be a good move for us.
I just think it protects us long-term. Like I said, I think we have been so very fortunate for a lot of years because of your dedicated service. But if we, at this point in time, were to wind up electing, say, a city judge and recorder that has not a clue, we are too big to be at the place for someone to start doing that. Ms. Kitchell's learned and grown and, and probably is ahead of so many within our state that does these things. But, but your average person, your average layperson is not going to have the skills, experience, or knowledge to execute that role in a way that we want it executed.
Is this is something we vote on now to happen in four years?
Well, what we are voting is to change-
Charter.
The charter, so.
And so what I would, what I would need to do between now and the next meeting is to draft an ordinance. And I haven't done that because I have not had time to do that. I would draft an ordinance, and it would be in your packet for the first meeting if you move this on. And then, just like, if it gets approved, just like the other charter change, if it gets approved, we are a private act charter. So our charter amendments have to go to the state legislature to be approved. They would approve it, and then it would have to come back to our body, and we would have to approve what they did by two-thirds vote for it to take effect, to be an effective charter change.
So we don't need a, a motion to send this on?
I, I, yes, I, I would like something-
Right now?
For you to, for, just to tell me to draft something and put it on the agenda.
I'll make the motion that Paige recommended.
So we have a motion to move it to, Ms. McCauley, to draft an ordinance to bring to on next meeting by Councilwoman Fennell and second by Councilwoman Fan. Any further discussion?
Uh, I just have one.
Nope.
Four years, or four years expired. Will it be two people in that position after that or one?
It would be one person that would be the city recorder full-time, like a department head. And then we would have a city judge that would be a very, very limited person that would come in. I, I don't, Ms. Kitchell can probably answer that better because she knows how most cities work there.
They would probably come in several days a month and hold court. And then you would have an appointed court clerk that would handle everything while they were not here. And so, because the state requires that, every city have a, an appointed court clerk that has to have a continuing education and that type of thing. So they're up on everything.
But I, I don't think, I don't think that the city judge would be an employee that would get our benefits and that type of thing. Because the, the-
Part-time position.
It's going to be a very limited number of hours that someone would come in and hear those cases.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries to move to the next session. Now, we can move on to other business. Anyone here from the council have anything they want to bring up?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, this goes back to our retail liquor stores, and, and we have had, it's been a real learning curve since November the 1st on all of these and the changes that we've made. Part of the ordinance reads, reads that they are required to meet several obligations for the city. They have to be in the right zoning. They have to have an approved lease. They also have to be within the mile radius. And so I had, on November the 1st, I had six applicants. Well, only two of those applicants have met all the requirements. The other four have not. So I guess I need to deny those because they haven't met and let those applicants know this. I don't know if I deny it or, or if this body denies it. That was one thing I was not sure about.
And it's not really set in the ordinance, but what, what my recommendation would be is that you name the ones, if you have the, the names of the businesses or the applicants, that you name those and ask that those be denied and have this council approve that denial. And then you can tell them the council has denied it. And do you have another, do you have an additional one that has come in since that time that doesn't meet that you need to have denial? Or is it just the four right now?
I'm still waiting on one of those there to bring me their, they brought me their lease, but I couldn't read it.
And that, we're not going to run into our 60-day deadline before January 3rd? Okay.
Yeah, we're close, but we're not there yet.
We need to add something in the ordinance that it needs to be-
We can't, the 60 days is state law. That is state law. We cannot touch that.
And I handed out you something tonight for the ones that, the three that we are, we will deny. One, the business name is Value and Variety Wine and Spirits, and they, their location was, is 459 Airport Road. And their location does not meet the zoning requirements. They have been notified of that, and they have also been in contact with the planning department if that changed. The next one would be Foxland Liquor Store. It would be located at 1867 Nashville Pike, and that is a, a mall, strip mall that will, that is, is to be built. It, they did not supply, provide a lease, and I do not think it will meet the mileage requirements either. Then the third one was Guru Krupa LLC, Golden Wine and Liquors, to be located at 885 Northwater Avenue. That's where Ashley and Trixie's Restaurant is and the market there. They would be going into the side where the restaurant is, but they do not meet the zoning requirements either. And they are the ones that are just, they're just right on the mileage also. So those three, because of these, they do not meet the requirement, so we need to deny them.
Was there a fourth? Because I thought there were six.
The fourth one, no, the fourth one is okay. Because we're, we're doing two. And then I have the, these three. And then the other lady is going to bring me her lease.
But if she doesn't meet, we don't have another meeting before January 3rd. It'll be more than 60 days.
That's until the 10th of January.
She didn't apply on November 1st?
On the 1st.
Okay.
I make a motion per the request of Connie Kitchell, the city reporter, to deny applications for 459 Airport Road, 1867 Nashville Pike, 885 Northwater Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Fennell and second by Councilwoman Love to deny those three applicants for those liquor stores that's presented by Ms. Kitchell. Uh, Kitchell, sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone else from the council?
I have one thing. Since we're talking about the charter, I, it's my understanding that we cannot give a small gift to city employees versus, according to our charter.
Code.
Which, okay, according to our code. I asked Ms. McCauley, Hi McCauley, about that, and she said that that is not allowed. But I'm just talking about giving a little gift of appreciation to an employee. And I spoke with her, and you can-
Well, it, it gets into the ethic. It's, it's under our ethics. So if you are giving them a gift because of their actions, something they're going to do, you can't do that. If you're a friend with them and you're giving them a gift because they're your friend, you can give them a gift. But this was because of something they had done or were going to do. And so I, I think what we need to do is probably just look at our ethics, what a lot of cities have done to get, to get around that. And we also have people that are routinely bringing things to the fire department and the police department and other city departments. And what we do, we, everybody shares with everyone. But some cities have put a limit of you could, an employee can accept up to like $25, a nominal amount. But I think that's something that we're going to need to probably discuss further and put on an agenda.
I do think that's something we need to do.
Give.
Also-
I'm, I'm not getting into all that.
Well, I also think there, there are often times when there is employee who has a hardship, and people give them gifts, not, and it's not for something they've done, but it's also not because they're a friend. And we don't want them to ever get into some situation where somebody can say, oh, well, they took this from thus and so. Because it happened, you know, a lot of times if there's an employee that has a hardship, community, community members might give something. And, and so I just would like to eliminate that issue if we can in any way, so. Look forward to future discussion.
We'll put that on the next work session.
Thank you.
That's what I was hoping.
I have two things, unless someone else does. Anyone? Okay. Um, one is it has, I have been asked by a council member if this body would consider returning to the way that we used to do committee meetings. Before I was in office, the council had asked that they take turns chairing the committee meetings during my, I guess, it was maybe a couple of years before I was in office. So it's always been done the way that we've done it, that I've been here. But someone asked me if it, if they thought it was time that this body considered going back to the way that it was traditionally done all the years before that time. So I bring that to you for a question. And then the second thing, I just wanted to advise you, I've, I've also had some requests for some people that have been stuck in some seats for a very long time to have new seats. And so I'm kind of working on like a new seating chart for the first of the year. And I do think that, I, I think I'm close. But anyway, I, I, but when you arrive on January 3rd, go to, regardless of what nameplate may be there, you go to the seat that you've always sat in.
Okay. I'd like to bring up about the, uh, switching it around for council members, our leading the meetings. I, since we only do it maybe twice a year, that we get to do it. I know, I, I don't know for myself. I don't really feel comfortable in that role because I don't do it enough. So I think it would be really great if we went back to where it's done the same way every month.
And, 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 um, I think tip, you know, back then, I think if the mayor could not chair a meeting, then the vice mayor did.
Yes.
That was kind of traditionally how it rolled.
Anybody else have an opinion of that?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
I'm with all you mentioned, Paige.
I don't know what action we need to take to, I, I don't know if that was just a decision they made at some point. I happened to be here the night they decided that, and I don't remember it being some big formal. But I think we probably did-
I think it's set out in the code, but I'll, I'll have to research it. I don't think that, I don't think it's that specific in the code. But I could be wrong. I don't have it memorized.
Yeah. And those are my two things. That's all for me.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, do we have anything from our department heads?
For the meeting, I handed out financial reports for October and November. They're on your desk. I know we've had a really long meeting, and we still have another one to go. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me in the office. have any questions, feel free to contact me in the office. I'll be glad to answer.
Looks great. Rose Mary Bates, EDA. Councilman Alexander. This may be the last meeting where I get to have this conversation with you. I'm shocked that you didn't call on me when I'm here. But Clearview Park, there is a public meeting scheduled for January 26th, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Shalom Zone to discuss the new structure for Clearview Park. And that will be promoted in the coming, you know, early January, but I wanted to let you know that date and time and location, and hope to see you there. And I have reached out to Councilman-elect Carter and am hoping to hear from him, to meet with him, to bring him up to speed as well. So, and the other is, we finally got the construction plans and bid packet for the gun range, and it is out for review by all the departments. And at this point, even if they were to sign off on everything, I don't think it's wise to bid it out until January. With the holidays, it just, we wouldn't get a good bid back, might not even get a bid back at all, so. But I wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything you did.
Thank you, Rose Mary.
Anyone else?
Eric collective, Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas, everyone. Now, we're going to have a motion to adjourn and then reconvene. Okay.
Motion adjourned.
We don't do that on, what was that, beginning of the meeting?
Okay, second? And we have a motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander.
Go adjourn.
Uh huh.
No. This next? Guess there'll be a meeting, so the mayor.
Do I need to move?
Paige, chair this next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to call to order this special called meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It was to immediately follow the work session. The time is 8:09 PM. I'll ask Ms. Kittrell to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Hayes and Councilman Overton are absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. I will read the agenda, and then we will allow public recognition only on the agenda-related item. So the agenda is determination of council as to whether applicant Pialbin Patel should be granted a certificate of compliance for a retail liquor store at 1680 Nashville Pike pursuant to Gallatin Municipal Code 3-52. City council is requiring the applicant to appear before it at the special called meeting to furnish information regarding the applicant's business. Is there any public recognition on the agenda-related item? If so, you may come forward at this time. I think, are you guys the applicants? Do you just want to hang tight until we actually consider the item? That'd be great. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on the agenda-related item only, closed, and we will move to item number one, and I will introduce city reporter Connie Kittrell.
Yes, Mayor, this is the applicant that has met all of the requirements that you have asked them to meet. You also have a handout on them. The corporation name is RR Gallatin Liquor Corporation. Their business name will be Metro Wine and Spirits. Their location is 1680 Nashville Pike. That was what they originally provided to me, but that is also another building that structure that will have to be built, and I think maybe the street number may have changed. We'll ask the applicant. The applicant is Pialbin Patel. They have their lease, their background check, their mileage, and their zoning have all been approved. They are here tonight, so if you would like to come forward. I can answer any questions? Yes.
Last thing I couldn't make on the time. I'm apologize for that.
And it worked out. Hey, there is a question. I was advised today that there may be a different address for that property, that it may be 1670 instead of 1680?
Actually, I got the 1680 from my architect, like, from Green LID. He's our senior architect, Andy Leith. So he sent me the 911 address, so it says 1680 on it. So that's what I put it on.
And if both of you would say your names, too, that way we would know exactly. Yes.
Yes, my name is Davel Patel, and she's my wife.
My name is Pial Patel, and we are from Dixon, and we are.
Get to this council to make a determination. We can ask questions about.
Where was it located at?
In Kennesaw.
Kennesaw.
And you guys had some questions about the size of the facility, and, and there may have been some others as well, but you wish for them to be here so that you could ask questions. And like Ms. Kittrell said, they do meet the qualifications, so.
Is this an existing building?
You're going to build out the new one.
No, I'm in the one.
Build a new one.
Yes, sir.
Whereabouts, I mean, when you're going into the gate of Kennesaw, it will be to the right next to the, Dr. Andy Reed's, the dentistry?
Like it, it across the, like.
Scott.
Sean, as you, as you go into Kennesaw Farms.
Mr. Foster, if you, if you will state your name, so we're recording, thank you.
I'm with Southeastern Buildings Builders. So you go into Kennesaw Farms Boulevard, right there on the right, we had sold that lot to a CVS drugstore. They purchased the lot from the CVS. So as you go into Kennesaw Farms, the first lot on the right will be a new 12,000 square foot building. Looks like 9,000 square foot will be a liquor store, class A liquor store, 3,000 will be a restaurant.
Okay.
It'll be a combination liquor store and restaurant?
Not necessarily a combination, but it's in the same building.
I got you. So is it past the entryway or?
It's right there at the entryway.
Radius.
Yeah, or wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Second. Motion to adjourn, second by Councilwoman Love or George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a lovely evening. More importantly, have a very Merry Christmas, and we will look forward together to a happy, healthy, and prosperous 2023. We'll see you on January 3rd.